Okay, we just started the meeting off in case the recording didn't work. We had Honorable Judge Tom Camel requesting acknowledgement from the Board. He's purchasing a vehicle from Courtland Police Department for $8,000. We have a letter from the prosecutor that states no problem with that at all. He didn't even need to come to us for approval, but Bill Danzo did give us approval regardless. And Morrow and I both concurred, you know, we have no problem with purchased vehicle for the court. The other one's been junked and the court's in need of a vehicle there for different odds and purposes, so it'll be put on our insurance and added to the fleet. And now we're starting with the regular part of the agenda. We also called Roll. Morrow, Kenner, Mason, Denny, Malloy are in attendance. Commissioner French goes absent. And we'll go to number one, dispense reading in the minutes dated June 14th and approve the video recording. Two, approve the bills. Three, to approve additional appropriations that submitted by Chelmsford County Auditor's Office between June 12th and June 23rd. I will start out, Auditor Yoder, we have Neocap.
Auditor Yoder, um, Neocap, that is setting up the fiscal year 24, 25 grant years. The youth subsidy grant for juvenile court is setting up the fiscal year 24 grant year. Auditor, my office is, this was not included in the original budget. It's our munis licensing, which is very important and that's the accounting that the whole county uses, so we need to have that. And of course, the cash is available for that, so we're fine on that. Common please, I think we have some, someone here from adult probation? Did you wanna, do you want me to go through these? I can, I just saw you there, so.
I don't think any of those are, those are common pleas.
Okay, there's, uh, I'll go through really quickly. The $10,000 is for building repairs and maintenance for the fiber solutions to install power and data for the kiosks and the newly created offices, installation of access points for Wi-Fi, installation of data drops in the new offices, repair damaged electrical switches, removal of old service mount data deck, and repair and replace broken data box and rewire. Uh, the $25,000 is for computer service software for Step Mobile OCSS probation systems for the Trumbull County Adult Probation to receive two new kiosk systems, one updated kiosk, and support all kiosk scanners for the new offices, and signature pads for all officers to be able to have defendants electronically signed documents. Um, the $7,000 is for bulletproof vests for Red Diamond for officers when they are out in the field. The $15,000 is for furniture and fixtures to be able to be, uh, to be able to purchase the remaining new desks and furniture needed for the incoming officers with empty offices. Uh, the $5,000 is for seminars and training with an increase in new officers. We are needing more training funds to help keep the officers up to date with all certifications. The, oh, sorry, the $2,000 is for gasoline for the county vehicles. Grant funds have been depleted and they now need to pay for gasoline for the county vehicles out of the general probation services fee account. And the $4,000 is for Supreme Court specialized docket drug court grant that must be used by 6/30/23.
And Sheriff, 557.
All right, uh, staff, it's an increase in furniture fixtures account. Um, and then the treasurer is to fix an over budget, um, not, of money not originally appropriated.
Okay, and number four, transfer appropriations.
These are long because we have two weeks worth.
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that.
Marcy Yoder, auditor. Um, so, Neocap is adding funds to payroll to account for two holidays. Uh, probate is to fix an over budget from equipment, and remember, these are transfers from one line item to another within a fund, so we're not changing funds at all on these. Okay, um, so it's to fix an over budget from equipment maintenance to office equipment. Uh, so the prosecutors is actually that's for a legal family law handbook, and this is for the assistant prosecutors. They share the handbook, they order it every other year. On the sheriffs, it's a transfer from motor vehicles, technical equipment and equipment maintenance to operations supplies, um, for the highway engineer. It's, they're in the process of trying to hire full-time employees through temporary services, so this money is being transferred for this service. Board of Elections is postage to cover a state mandated mailing in preparation for the upcoming August election. Uh, the Planning Commission, uh, those are just a transfer to organize remaining appropriations near the end of the grant year. Both of those, one, even both the large one and the small one, but they're just two different years. Um, the soil and water is for an increase in cost associated with district programs as well as added program and...
Paula.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Paula, I just wanted to, um, clarify, the $33.22 is for Fund 258, that's HSPS.
Which one is that, to Land's Park?
That's the $33.22.
Okay, the...
That's the HSPS reserve.
That is community development.
Correct.
Sorry.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The remaining ones are the sanitary engineers. I'll let you do that.
Well, my random sanitary engineers. The $3,661 is a transfer to refund a customer, a customer largely overpaid or water bill and we were gonna do a refund in an amount. Um, the $25,000, my Fund 602, we need to replace a sewage pump in our Georgetown.
Okay, thank you. Number five, receive amended certificate. We have one for Neocap, one for youth subsidy grant fiscal year 24, and we have one for the sheriff.
Okay, the Neocap and the youth subsidy grant both correspond to that additional appropriations listed earlier. Um, and the sheriff is, they have an increase in fines in their forfeiture account. The actual revenue was greater than estimated.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Six, authorized board of commissioners lock in energy price for 24 months fixed electric rate 59 cents with Energy Harbor LLC upon the advice of Buckeye Energy Brokers. This is for...
Paula, the vote o'clock clerk. It's for address 520 West Main Street in Courtland. Mr. Belish had a layover, he's in Denver, he would be here, but I did send this to prosecutor's office.
So that's the ag building, I take it?
Yes, and, and, uh, he, Mr. Toth did help me look at the, the action, and I do have that for you in your backup, I did print it, and he had no problem with it. He just had me add the rate to the journal action and just ask the board to look over the agreement which I gave you, so.
Yeah, we do have a copy of the agreement and we have a copy of the letter from Mr. Toth. Okay, thank you. For seven, approve two service agreements for three x-ray scanners the county possesses at the following locations, Department of Job and Family Service, Child Support Enforcement Agency, and Trumbull County Admin Building. Total cost of service agreements is $22,299. Average per machine per year is $37,16. In addition, service agreements provides one annual run of maintenance and no additional cost to be paid from that fund. The agreements are listed Smith's Detection and Astrophysics for a total of $22,299. And I take it that's, if those were bids or there's something that we didn't have to do, anything above and beyond that, specialized services, yes?
Paula, the vote o'clock clerk, Ms. Sheriff Taylor, Council Table Clerk. We put on the journal for transparency, so this was sent to the board and we put it on the journal so you could see we do need these agreements to serve these prior service agreements, so.
Okay.
I don't know that it was journalized before, but it's journalized now, so.
Commissioner?
Oh, just, these are new agreements then, or extension agreements? I could have...
John Gargano, JFS Commissioner, so you know, these, um, these x-ray machines were purchased approximately, I don't know, five years ago or so, and they were through a grant through the Commissioner's Office. And at that time, we had service agreements. Um, recently, there was an issue with the one at JFS, there was airs coming up, and we found out that there were, the service agreements had expired with these companies, so this is just a continuation of those service agreements with the companies to perform those services.
Okay.
These have never been, Sheriff Taylor, these have never been journalized before. Commissioner asked if it'd be put on the journal, Paula did as she was asked. Um, these are agreements, these are three two-year agreements. One year, but I think it's gonna go to past, yeah, we want, we want two-year agreements, so that we're not dealing with this next year as well. Um, one machine that we currently have is throwing an error code, just to come out and look at it, is $1,951, nothing of that nature, so it's what we went through each machines that are, the one machine that's Astrophysics is the one in Admin Building. Um, it was new and I want to say in 2020, we had a surge and a storm just blew it out, so that, that's a new machine, so we should have a service agreement on that machine. The other two, I think, are from 2019, is, and we, we only went on one-year agreement, which is how this all transpired. Now, we're, we're in the conundrum like it just got bypassed, and the one machine is throwing an error code.
Correct, one at JFS is throwing an error and we need it fixed, and there's no service agreement, because we went and looked, it was, it expired, so I, we got a hold of the Commissioner's Office, because it's not our machine, it's, it's through the Commissioner's Office, like I said, that grant, and so we need that service agreement for them to come out and provide the service and not cost that $2,000.
Correct.
But we only need the agreements for two machines or three machines?
Great, there are three, two belong to the Smith's Detection, that was where, who services them, and ours is the Astrophysics.
But when we got the new machine, did that, did that new agreement kick in with it or no?
We had an agreement with it, but it's now expired, yeah.
And that takes back as well, okay.
Yeah, everything is, we don't wanna do a...
I didn't know if when we replaced the machine with the power surge, if we got a new agreement.
We did have an agreement, but now it's now expired, yeah. And, and I thought that three-year might be a little bit long, but it's a little, it's quite a bit more costly. It's like 12 grand for one machine.
Thank you, Bill Hart, Maintenance Bureau.
Yes, Sheriff, is the courthouse still active, the courthouse secretary machine?
That I don't know.
Okay. I think we do have, we do have more.
Was it the same time?
I think it was all purchased at the same time, we got them all.
Well, if that's the case, then we should be adding a fourth machine.
We need to look at just picture.
We need to find out where, where the, the agreement has, it is...
Can we, can we do that before tomorrow so that we're not...
I sure can, I sure can.
I'm making sure, just to check that out.
Okay, no, that's, that's, because I'm not even thinking of the courthouse, honestly.
Yep, yep.
Any idea who I should call?
No, but I'll go over there and look into it.
Okay, I'll talk to you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff Taylor. Number eight, towards the only bid is submitted by Main Light Electric Company for the traffic signal maintenance in the amount of $51,600 to be paid from the highway fund and enter into contract with Main Light Electric Company for said traffic signal maintenance, so be prepared of one year beginning July 7th, and, uh... Yeah, nobody here from Highway? Only this one light in one place, it doesn't have a location?
They're out of the line off anyway.
So they're gonna handle maintenance of all of the lights through the county, or are there certain ones?
Paula, the vote o'clock clerk, I know that Main Light does, uh, usually is the one that, the only one that's been on this in a couple of years, so.
Okay.
And I, I don't know if they complained that last time, that certain lights are responsible for, I know, but they did, have had this the last couple of years, Sheriff, so, thank you.
Number nine, incur with Trumbull County Engineer to grant special hauling permits for gyro transportation. Um, we've dealt with this every meeting, so don't worry with all that. Incur with Trumbull County Engineer to grant quarterly operator fleet permit on load close to Trumbull County roadways for case farms. Incur with Trumbull County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permit requested by the company below. Jim Verena. Number 12, to acknowledge received proposal for the True Cemetery Bridge Newton Township, which consists of the rehab of the historic pedestrian bridge, which spans the west branch of Mahoney River and connects Newton Township's east and west cemeteries. And authorize the clerk of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to re-advertise for sealed bids for the True Cemetery Bridge project, as no bids were received for the project that was previously advertised on the agenda dated February 1st and March 15th. Project being funded by 80% transportation alternative program grant obtained through Eastgate Regional Council Governments, with 20% local match provided by Newton Township. No general county funds are required. So that's just to rebid that, no bids the first time. Thirteen, authorize Board of Trumbull County Commissioners Clerk to re-advertise for sealed bids for the Trumbull County Adult Probation Department to accept payments by a financial transaction device. We've talked about that in past meetings, now we're gonna advertise finally. Fourteen, approve the purchase of the easement and temporary easements from RMI Titanium in the amount of $58,560. Please find a copy of the signed standard highway easement and temporary easements regarding partial 16SH, 16T1, and T2 for the Western Reserve Greenway Bike Trail in Trumbull County, Ohio. Total cost of the standard highway easement and temporary easements are $58,560. Know we got that.
Yeah, Sacree Sped, uh, Trumbull County Metro Park. Uh, this is another acquisition for phase four, uh, so we're purchasing, like it says here, easement and two temporary easements, which are construction easements for the project, um, and 80% of that amount will be reimbursed back to the county through ODOT.
The 20% that, that we're on the hook for, is that coming from the state or coming from the, from grants, from state grants or from general funds?
So, we, so what we do is we transfer the full amount from your, the county's, um, um, O1 account.
Yeah.
And then we reimburse the 80, 80% goes back into the Commissioner's account, so if you want us to use local funds, then we can reimburse the 100% back.
We wanted to use local funds.
Correct. Well, and so, yeah.
But the 80% is federal money?
Correct, yes, yes.
And the 20% usually comes from the Commissioners?
Yes, correct.
That's all we need to do. So the 46%, or 46,000 is for the federal funds?
Correct.
That's what we're gonna get back.
Yes, yeah, it'll be, yeah, just off 46,000 and change.
So we'll pay about 12?
$11,712.
Okay, I'm clear on it.
And that will leave us with just three acquisitions, um, after this one. That will be Norfolk Southern, Port Authority, and Ohio Edition for the project. No moving into the construction phase of that project.
And this was negotiated with RMI and this is actually helpful to them, correct?
Correct, yes, we negotiated with them and we actually had a, they asked us to realign the trail a little bit in their property to be more advantageous for them, and we were willing to do that, so.
Julie, any input on this, Julie Green?
This project brings a lot of preparation for this entire area. We appreciate the Commissioners. I've been working on it for 23, hoping that it'll be done before I retire.
Number 15, received fiscal officer's certificate signed by the Trumbull County Auditor in connection with proposed issuance of notes at a principal amount not to exceed $800,000 to be issued in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay the cost of the replacement of elevators and the county's admin building, and to pay issuance costs, all in connection therewith.
Okay, um, so we've talked about this, um, this...
Martha Yoder, auditor.
Oh, sorry, Martha Yoder, auditor, I apologize. Um, 15 and 16, we can just kinda cover together because they're the same issue. Um, the first part is the fiscal officer's certificate, which is actually already signed and ready for you guys for tomorrow, um, and that is for the notes. Um, so, there's a process when we borrow money as a county for projects like this. We'll do a note, and then when the project is done, we do a bond. Um, the bond may be, um, probably because of the length of, of this project, will, will probably not happen for another two years, because the bond doesn't happen until the project is complete. The elevators themselves have been estimated at 729. We're taking out notes for 800 as a just-in-case. So when we transfer those notes to bonds in a couple of years, whatever we don't spend for the elevator, then we'll go to pay the note and we'll take a bond for the actual cost of the elevator. Um, so this is just the first step in the process to get the notes started. This allows Bond Counsel and our financial advisor and Raymond James to go ahead and get those notes.
Down the things squeak, squeals?
Yes.
Makes a weird sound, got everybody on pins and needles, so.
Yeah, I know, and I, I wish that it could be, we could snap our fingers and it would be done, uh, but as, uh, Mr. Hart has kindly educated me on the whole process, it's gonna take a little bit, but we'll get there, um, but this is the first step and it's a good step.
Seventeen, approve the fiscal years 24, 25, community-based corrections program subsidy grant agreement in the amount of $1,317,936, and TCAP in the amount of 1.2 to be paid in eight equal installment of $318,000 and change. Grant is effective for term commencing July 1st and ending June 30th. Um, Ms. Grayhouse, do you have anything regarding that?
I'm gonna do it. Hi, I'm Tracy Hunt, I'm the Chief Probation Officer of the Adult Probation Department. This is actually worded incorrectly. What I actually am going to be requesting is specifically from the TCAP grant. TCAP is targeted community alternatives prison. It's the first time we have the opportunity to get this grant for the $1.2 million. To get it, we are 99% there. That final 1% requires that the Court of Commons Please, the Sheriff's Department, the probation department, and the county commissioner sign a memorandum of understanding that we will agree to the terms of the TCAP. It's very simple, the, there's a revised code section that instructs the Commons Please judges that they cannot sentence F5 offenders under both conditions to prison, instead they will need to be sentenced to... And then it's an agreement that the county will comply with the fiscal guidelines for accepting grant funds, the same guidelines we have for all of our other CPA grants, so there's nothing new there. Um, but for us to get the grant, it requires a signature.
Okay, so, um, we're gonna need Paula back in here for that, show up to make that change.
Yeah.
She's, she's looking something up for me right now. But the wording in this explains what you're doing, but...
We're still gonna want the wording of 17 just next week, not the, uh, tomorrow, it'll be in a week or two.
Tracy, I wanna thank you and your department. You guys have never received a grant before, correct?
We've never received this grant before, and what it will do, in large part, will allow us to move a lot of the salary for existing probation officers out of the general fund and into...
Cost savings for the county, more cost savings for the general fund.
Absolutely.
And you've been in this position how long now?
Just one.
You got this grant?
Yes, sir.
Nice job.
Do we have to wait for tomorrow to get the signature?
Uh, typically, yes, because we, we obviously can't sign until we vote on. So what we need is, what you need from us is a signature on the memorandum of understanding or letter.
I have it if you would like to take a quick...
Sure, yeah.
And it's very simple. That's the original.
That's the original.
Um, it requires the sheriff's signature, um, part of the grant is also going to give money to the sheriff's office, um, because there is a potential for an... Although the Commons Please judges and probation department, the jail's actually getting a flood of F5 offenders, they're going to be, the probation department's gonna be getting a flood of F5 offenders, um, and there are other alternatives, but it does give funding to the sheriff's office so that he can...
Well, I'd probably hold off on it until tomorrow, if that's okay?
Yes, of course.
Um, can we just, you'll, when Paula comes back, can you give it to her and stand it up?
Sure.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to 18, we'll circle back to that, I forget this one. Okay, we have a barrage of things that came back from legal, so things ready to move forward on some ARBA funds. First one being number 18, adopt a resolution authorizing stormwater and sewer projects from American Rescue Plan Act funds, ODOT divergent diamond waterline relocation project.
All right, Gary Newbrow, Trumbull County Sanitary Engineer. Uh, Commissioners, we went through this months ago on the financial arrangements regarding, uh, the cost for ODOT to relocate our water line on 46 out by the diverging diamond, and this authorizes, uh, 167, 250, uh, as a portion of the amount that we owe ODOT for this.
Are we still receiving the money from Eastgate as well?
Uh, I have been in contact with them and, um, I haven't gotten a firm response. Uh, as a matter of fact, Jim Kinnick, I, I just saw him last week, I was down at Eastgate for another meeting, he says he's still trying to get this arranged. He hasn't forgotten about us, but there's nothing immediate or, oh, here's the money, so that hasn't...
How much was that again? How much?
$250,000. Yeah, so, uh, still haven't secured those funds. But I am doing what I can to try to find out what Eastgate requires of us in order to get them.
Okay. I met with him also regarding that, and he said they would get it for us, it's gonna require a little bit of time, but he made a commitment that Eastgate would come up with the funds if we ponied up our end.
All right.
So what we did now, we did, now it's on him to follow through on his, uh...
Yeah, right.
Okay, number 19, adopt a resolution authorizing stormwater and sewer projects from American Rescue Projects for American Rescue Plan Act Fund, Engineering Services for the Blueprint Phase Two Water Improvement Project.
All right, Gary Newbrow, Sanitary Engineer, uh, this is, yes, this is the second phase of the blueprint project. Uh, most of these water lines are out in Braysville Township, and we already did the RFQ for Engineering Services. Uh, Burdison Maple was found to be the most qualified, and, uh, I should be able to execute an engineering agreement with them, uh, shortly. It's just I needed funds in order to be able to pay for it, so.
And that's $435,000.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Gary, is that gonna, is that gonna cover, uh, Morrow, Councilman, Commissioner, is that gonna cover, I know Mr. Cooch, the former trustee out there, has been very vocal...
Yes, this is exactly the project that he is concerned with, yes.
Very good, very good. We, we definitely, hopefully, he's at a meeting next, he's been waiting patiently on this.
Yes, yes.
Okay, number 20, adopt a resolution authorizing stormwater and sewer projects for American Rescue Plan Act Fund, Engineering Services for the Crane Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project.
All right, uh, Gary Newbrow, Sanitary Engineer, this is, uh, the project in Weathersfield to, um, service a low to moderate income neighborhood. Um, it's also known as McKinley Heights Phase Three, and sort of portion of McKinley Heights between, uh, US 422 and Anderson Morris Road, there's another neighborhood back in there. Um, uh, we have 60-some connections that need to get connected in, and I intend... and I intend on submitting this for an OPWC grant in the fall, but we need to move with the engineering now in order for that project to be able to support for the OPWC. So, this covers the engineering portion of it, uh, I should be able to get seven hundred and fifty thousand from an OPWC grant. And with these two funds combined, we should be able to, um, present a project, uh, to the residents somewhere in a neighborhood of, uh, twenty-five to thirty dollar a month capital charge in order to build it.
And this is for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yes, yes.
And how, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, fifty-five households or fifty-five improved properties, is that what you said?
Yeah, um, Paula, while you were gone, we, um, let's go back to number seventeen. This needs to go on in a couple of weeks. First, what they're requesting now is memorandum of under- uh, of, uh-
Just changing the language until we get that- And then there's the signatures. I will, um, go ahead and change this language. Thank you, I'm going to just, um, may I interrupt?
Yes.
There's Paula, the vote of clerk, I just got an email from Tom Bellic, Mr. Tom Bellic, our broker, energy broker. That's at the beginning, I believe it was the first item after the transfers.
Number six.
Yes, he said that the rate that's on there was that the rate that day. It is now a different rate. Uh, he, I have asked him to call in and, uh, to have Sheriff, he's in Denver, to unmute him, speak to the board. And I do remember this, that the rates do change daily, so whatever it is tomorrow, so I do need to take the rate out of, with your permission, out of this agenda item because it's-
fluctuating.
He's gonna assume where it will close. Is it six something now, it should maybe close at five point something, however, can't, the- the agenda item can't stand as it is because it's just like, you never know. So he's gonna call in to explain that to you better, hopefully he'll get my email and Sheriff will let him in. So I'll go make copies of this and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna go back to number twenty-one. Adopt a resolution authorizing stormwater and sewer projects from ARP funds. Smith Stewart Road Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project to extend public sanitary sewer service.
All right, uh, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, yeah, Commissioner, this is another sewer project. Uh, we had the design complete, uh, exhausted every other funding source that we can have for this. I was able to get zero percent loan money for the loan portion of it, but this amount was necessary in order to reduce the front foot assessment from, uh, two hundred dollar the front foot to about seventy-five dollars a front foot. So this was very necessary, this project's been on the books for, um, let me see, or this one is Smith Stewart, since two thousand and sixteen and we were always stuck with that problem of it's gonna be too expensive for the people. We can't charge two hundred bucks a foot out there. We'll take it to a public hearing with two hundred a foot, so-
Approximately fourteen properties in Viana Township, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, and so, uh, combined with this and the other ones that are on the agenda, I'm seeing, uh, four more public hearings before the end of the year, okay? Uh, we got the one for Elm Road coming up and we got Scott Street Pangolin out there, uh, that we may have to do the, uh, public hearing for Scott Street too, so we're looking at-
The good news is we got good numbers for assessments to offer.
Yes, yes, yes.
I gotta tell you, Gary, too, um, one of the reasons I ran was sewer and water projects for rural areas. I've only been here six months now and I- I can't even count the number of projects that you've brought that we're funding already that are extending sewer and water to residents in the county, so I commend you on that. Like you said, this has been on the books for seven years.
Yes.
Finally getting it done and, um, hats off to you for pushing forward with that stuff.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
Number twenty-two. Adopt a resolution authorizing stormwater and sewer projects from American Rescue Plan Act Funds. Engineering services for the State Road Water Regionalization Project.
Uh, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, uh, commissioners, this is a- a water project to build a water pump station out on State Road in Champion Township and to also extend the water line from that pump station into the Braceville District. Um, this- this project is, uh, has many advantages to it. Uh, number one being we can switch water providers in Braceville from Newton Falls to the City of Warren. Uh, I talked to the City of Warren, they have adequate capacity for it. Um, and as you know, we are having problems with the water quality coming from Newton Falls trying to extend it that far to the north. Uh, we- we've gotten, uh, some violations from the EPA regarding, uh, HKA fives and it's also, uh, resulting in, uh, some violations for ability west farming. This project should eliminate that problem. Uh, the EPA liked it so much that when I nominated it in April, they gave us fifty percent principal forgiveness. So besides this engineering here, uh, I need the engineering done and- and get it bid out before next June in order to get that, uh, million dollars of principal forgiveness from the EPA, so we gotta get moving on the engineering now.
And this is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and it's gonna provide public water for up to a hundred properties?
Yes, there's a hundred properties between that pump station and where we're tying in in Braceville that they could also connect, so besides that benefit. Okay, so this is, the state loved the project and it scored very high and that's why they gave us the principal forgiveness.
Fantastic.
I remember, Gary, when we did the Maro Cantle, Mason, Commissioner, when we did the blueprint project initially, uh, that there was some to do about, you know, obviously this project as well and why we weren't accomplishing this for- for that portion of the residents. So, um, commend you for both tackling both projects. I mean, we had issues with obviously Southington and- and the blueprint project, but we also knew that this was an issue as well in the Champion District and everything. So we appreciate it and, um, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioners.
Yep. And adopt a resolution authorizing stormwater and sewer projects from ARP funds. Trumbull County Sanitary Lateral Assistance Program, SLA.
Uh, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, uh, Commissioners, I've explained this one at past meetings that we have, um, many properties owner, uh, many property owners throughout the county that have access to the sanitary sewers, but, uh, they do not have the funding to make the connection. Um, Emily and Julie at the planning commission, they are able to get some funding through the EPA, through HSBS program. That's only about seventy-five thousand dollars per year that they can spread countywide for these connections. The other seventy-five thousand has to go to septic upgrades, but, uh, and Emily has coined an extensive list of people that are qualified uh, for the connection, but she just doesn't have the money to do it. And so we would like to, um, uh, clean up her list. And also we have State Road just start, we just had substantial completion on State Road out in Champion and I guess, um, probably maybe a dozen people out there that are qualified for this also. Um, and these other projects that are on here, um, uh, let me see here, like, uh, State Line, Yankee Lake is coming up, um, Smith Stewart, Scoville Drive, we're gonna have some people out there to qualify also, so that's where I came up with the estimate, about sixty should cover us countywide in order to, uh, help these people with their connections.
Sixty connections of people that otherwise wouldn't be able to connect.
Yeah, and that's a conservative figure, sixty, we may be able to get more.
Right, I hope you're counting that and over there, this is- there's a ton of people getting water and sewer today.
Yes.
Um, you run out of ink in that pen, we'll get you another one. Number twenty-four. Adopt a resolution authorizing stormwater and sewer projects from ARP Plan Act Funds. Scoville Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project to extend public sanitary sewer service.
All right, Commissioners, Gary Newbrow again, um, this is very similar to the Smith Stewart Road project. Um, if we were to go out and try to build it now, we're looking at front footage assessments of around two hundred bucks a foot. Uh, this funding here, I estimate it'll reduce those assessments to seventy-five dollars a front foot. Engineering's done, we're ready to go to a public hearing, so this is another one, expect a public hearing, uh, shortly.
Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, fifteen properties, Scoville Drive. Add it to the pack. Number twenty-five. Adopt a resolution authorizing stormwater and sewer projects from ARP Funds. Stillwagon Road Water Improvement Project to send public water service.
Uh, Gary Newbrow, yeah, Commissioners, this is another project that's been hanging out there. Uh, engineering, design engineering is complete. Uh, I submitted it for, uh, WSRLA. Uh, we did not get principal forgiveness on it, so, uh, I'm- I'm asking for some financial assistance here in order to reduce the front foot assessments from about eighty dollars a front foot to fifty dollars a front foot. And for water, uh, hopefully fifty dollars a front foot will be low enough for it to pass the public hearing.
This is, um, Weathersfield Township, right?
Yes.
So once again, for twenty-six homes, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, doing this to reduce the cost of what they pay to tap in uh, in an effort to provide clean water and sewer throughout the whole county at minimal cost. Okay, number twenty-six. Adopt a resolution authorizing stormwater and sewer projects from ARP Funds. State Line Road Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project.
Uh, Gary Newbrow, uh, Commissioners, this is a project that only includes six houses, but it's right out at the border of Pennsylvania, out in Brookfield Township on State Line Road. We got six houses on the Ohio side of that line that do not have sewer service, but the people in Pennsylvania on the other side do have sewer service through their backyards. Uh, this project, they were looking at trying to do it through a private extension, uh, years ago. Um, I think I have a date on this of, uh, two thousand and fourteen. So we've been in, trying to do it through a private extension. The residents out there, it is not a high-income area, it's, uh, rather a low-income area and we have been scratching our heads about how we may be able to solve this problem for them for, well, oh, nine years now. And if I, if I'm able to secure just ninety thousand dollars of the ARP funds, we can go ahead and get these six people tied in, uh, and reduce that ca- and they're gonna have a capital charge of about thirty dollars a month on their sewer bill to make this happen. So, I- I think it's a good project and, uh, uh, the people out there will really welcome this. And the trustees have been asking about this one in particular.
Okay. All right, Gary, that, uh, concludes your end of the agenda and you just made-
Oh, I got, I got, I got another one coming up later, so.
Okay.
All right.
Basking in glory for a second when we get to twenty-seven.
All right.
Uh, number twenty-seven, accept and award bid the lowest responsive and responsible bid submitted by Ramp Construction. Four horse barn roof replacement project located at Trumbull County Fairgrounds in the amount of a hundred and seventeen thousand. And to further authorize Denny Moye, President of Board of Commissioners, to execute any and all documents required, this is given on behalf of Trumbull County. We had three bids, uh, in addition to that, tester roofing, chip construction and bog and suns and they came in considerably lower than the highest bid and, um, Phil Hart?
Phil Hart, Trumbull County Maintenance, uh, speaking for Max Swentke. Um, yeah, so we gotta move forward on these projects. Hopefully they won't be done before fair, due to material, so as soon as fair's over, they'll be in there and they'll support on it, be done.
Fantastic, that's something that, the, um, parking areas will be done, the roofs on the other buildings are already done and, uh, moving forward with the fair. Okay, twenty-eight. Accept and award bid the lowest responsive and responsible bid submitted by Eighty Excavating to the Board Office Drainage and Paving Repairs located at Trumbull County Fairgrounds in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand, eight forty-nine. And to further authorize Denny Moye, President of Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute any and all documents required, this is given on behalf of Trumbull County. Um, special note, only one bid was received. There was a bidding irregularity with non-collusion affidavit form which must be completed prior to the execution of contract, so we had one company that did it correctly, that-
Correct, Phil Hart from Trumbull County Maintenance, speaking for Max Swentke. Um, yeah, it's only one bidder was, uh, applied for this project. Um, Mr. Swentke did talk to Mr. Dango about the irregularity in it. Um, form was there and completed, just wasn't signed. So it was said to Mr. Swentke that, um, it's up to the Commissioners to either accept this single bid that was received, move forward with the project, or I'm sure have to start all over again.
This is the only one submitted and it's a signature and one piece of paper that wasn't signed.
Correct, and it'd be signed before the contractor's award.
Then it is a Trumbull County business. You know, I'm- I'm in favor of moving forward with it. Commissioner?
Yes.
You okay with that too?
Absolutely.
I don't wanna hold anything up on this with the fairgrounds.
No.
We have the fair coming up and- and people excited about this, there's no reason to go backwards. If there would've been another bidder, absolutely I would've said, think it's gonna be fair all the way across. Being they were the only ones and it's just a signature, the prosecutor's okay with it, then I- I would vote in favor of moving forward.
Yeah, we've done our due diligence for us bidding it, then, you know, I mean, to rebid it would cost more money, so, uh, we gotta take that into account, I'm ready to do it.
Right, and there's a bid out there with what the price is and- and, uh, yeah. Twenty-nine. Adopt a resolution declaring the necessity of constructing the Homeroad Water Improvement Project number two W sixteen for Trumbull County Combined Water District within the Trumbull County Combined Sewer District located in Bezetta Township. And a note here, Thursday, August third at seven PM is the time in Bezetta Admin Building for a public hearing of objections or acceptance of the project. I know the Bezetta Township trustees have been chomping at the bit over this and waiting, waiting, and a lot of people on Elm Road, um, waiting for this meeting and they wanna see progress go forward, uh, so I'm moving with it.
Well, uh, Gary Newbrow, uh, Trumbull County Sanitary Engineer, uh, this has been since, uh, we got the petitions for this project in two thousand and twelve. So we're looking at eleven years we've been trying to solve this problem. The biggest problem we always have is that you got the railroad tracks on the other side of five. And only it does half, half, half the side of the road, which dries up those assessments considerably. Um, then we ran into the problem of EPA's gonna require us to recreate a whole nother public water system in order to, uh, build this project because it wasn't interconnected with our Champion Bezetta system. Uh, recently we figured out a way to get it interconnected with the, um, Champion system and at the same time provide more service to some people on Warren Meadville Road. Uh, the total project cost is a little over three million dollars. Um, and I got a OPWC grant for seven hundred and fifty thousand. We've already committed a little over one point three million from the ARP funds for the project. So we're only gonna have an estimated debt of a little under a million dollars, uh, to be spread through these assessments. And the numbers that I have preliminarily on the assessments, uh, were at forty-nine point nine four per front foot with service connection assessments of about fifteen hundred dollars apiece. And you could triple those if we weren't able to get the grant funds put together and figure out a way to, uh, make this happen. So it was always the cost that was the delay in this project and figuring out how we can get an affordable project to the re- to the property owners. We finally, the stars have aligned, we're ready to go to the public hearing and hopefully this will pass.
And this will ultimately be on the main line that will connect possibly to some of the neighborhoods that are-
Yes.
Of Elm Road.
Yes.
That are without water at this time.
Yes, yes, 'cause there's no line on three oh five, uh, once you get up there north. Um, well, Cortland has some lines up around forty-six, but we can get, uh, that neighborhood with, uh, three oh five, Wilmar Courts, uh, there's a few other-
Williams Drive and Cleared to Kobe.
Yes.
That whole corner back there, they got sewer but not water.
Yes, this gets the- the water lines closer to them also.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure Bezetta residents and Bezetta trustees are gonna be happy to hear this.
Yes.
That's a fact, right? Okay, number thirty. To record on the journal for record purposes, the public official continuation certificate renewal bond for John Gargano Esquire is the Director of Trumbull County Department- renewal bond for John Gargano Esquire is the Director of Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services. The official bond continues indefinitely for the duration of Attorney Gargano's term of service. The bond is the amount of five thousand dollars in effective term commencing July five twenty-three to July five twenty-four. The bond should be filed with Trumbull County Treasurer's Office in accordance with O R C.
Yes, John Gargano, J F S. This is just an annual, uh, bond for myself, and it's up in July, so it's for a one-year term. And, uh, as you've indicated, it's in the amount of five thousand dollars. Um, if you want, it could go on to thirty-one and thirty-two, 'cause they're also.
Sure, go ahead, John.
Um, the thirty-one is to approve a service contract between J F S and Nesco Resources, L L C. And this is in the amount not to exceed four hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. And this is to be paid, uh, from the, uh, Temporary Assistance Needing Family, TANF, uh, Comprehensive Management and Employment Program. It's no general fund, and this is for a term of Jul- uh, June twelfth, twenty twenty-three through September twenty, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And this is for, uh, Nesco to be employer of record and payroll services for approximately eighty, um, disa- disadvantaged youths to provide them with, uh, work opportunity and also gain experience, and also to provide them with some financial, uh, monies for them. Uh, the second one is a similar.
Nesco is like a temp agency?
Yes, yes. They used to be Callis, but they changed their name from Callis to Nesco.
Okay.
Uh, and the same with thirty-two, except for, this is, uh, for an amount not to exceed two hundred nine thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. And the reason why there's two agreements, because this comes from a separate fund, a different fund, they should say, which is, um, TANF with Prevention, Retention, Contingency Program Funds. And this is for approximately thirty-five youths in that area. Again, they would be provided summer work opportunities, and they would give them financial, um, some financial monies and gain experience while earning a paycheck. And, uh, we had two bidders, we go out to bid for this, we had two bidders. Uh, the other bidder unfortunately failed to provide verification of their current liability and insurance coverage as required by the bid, so they were not considered in this, uh, in the bidding.
All right, thirty-three. Concur with Trumbull County Planning Commission for the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to authorize the following. Authorize change order number two for no-cost time extension through July thirty-first, the contract with M J D Excavating for the West Farmington Sanitary Sewer Household Connection Project funded through P Y twenty twenty-one Community Development Block Grant Allocation Project and the Home Sewer Treatment Reserve Program. And authorize President Denny Malloy to sign the change order number two, form attached. Phil, agree?
Um, it, this is the second extension of time. They, um, cost this, it is in the amount of restoration, and, um, he agrees because it's within the grant time. I wanna clarify on the, um, because T F funding, uh, that Gary mentioned, on a typical year, we do have seventy-five thousand for a, uh, sanitary lateral assistance. However, because we use the entire amount for West Farmington, this year we're required to use the entire one fifty for each of the H F T F. Lateral assistance, but we can resume that practice and. And, um, do you want me to just go on to the next one?
Yeah, thirty-four, approve satisfaction of mortgage on the property homeowner of Gaines and Vickers. The mortgage, uh, in the contract amount of ten thousand dollars, set for ten-year declining repayment schedule, is a state of satisfaction, all terms and conditions to the mortgage.
And, um, release of mortgage, we are attempting to identify older ones that we inherited and also keep a running spreadsheet to make.
Okay, and number thirty-five, concur with the Planning Commission for the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to approve the agreement with Hillbarth and King to perform accounting services in the amount of thirteen thousand two hundred.
We did send out an R S P to. Only received one response. And Hillbarth and King have been conducting accounting for C D B G the last two decades. Um, it is a requirement per the C D B G. And a content. ability of preparing a general ledger and viewing the cash balance. Doing this type of contract with Hillbarth.
Thirty-six, concur with Trumbull County Planning Commission and authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to authorize Denny Malloy, President, to sign a notice to proceed letter for the connection of two L M I households for Stephen Lesko Junior for the P Y twenty twenty-one C D B G Allocation Grant Program, Project One Activity One Household Connections, West Farmington Sanitary Sewer Household Connection Project.
For the larger West Farmington project, um, we are attempting to utilize all of the grant funds. That's the reason for testing additional.
Okay, and I concur with Planning Commission, approve change order number one, the contract Stephen Lesko Junior for the West Farmington Village Sanitary Lateral Systems, where I take it he's the landlord there, then?
No, the, um, the change order is because, uh, we actually have three awarded by the commissioners, and the third household that was being served had a house fire, unfortunately, and it's unfit for. They won't be moving forward with. So, these funds, the H F T F funds, um, can be. Another person on the list.
And then, number thirty-eight. Approve the resignation of Ms. Brandy Greenwood, Manager of the Office of Elderly Affairs and Senior Nutrition, effective Monday, July seventeen, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we wish to wish Brandy well in her endeavor with Sheriff's Department, thank Brandy for all her dedicated work for the seniors of the county. And, um, Brandy, as we talked about in past meetings, they're worried about running short, they were able to find some bridges to get them through the end of the year. So, um, we anticipate, um, we'll go into thirty-nine. Uh, to approve the personnel action for temporary change in job classification and pay for Ms. Mary Beth Pumpfree to the full-time interim manager of Office of Elderly Affairs and Senior Nutrition, effective Monday, July seventeenth, Ms. Pumpfree replaced the rate twenty-five ninety per hour, range nine, five years. This per the recommendation of Human Resources Department and Senior Levy Administrator. She will remain in her interim status until all the funding for the offices are depleted. And, um, at that time, she'll remain full-time, but will transition her senior levy to her previous rate, range three, step five. So, what's happening here is Brandy is gonna, is, uh, took another job. Uh, Ms. Pumpfree is gonna step up to handle her duties and Brandy's duties until the money runs out, that's already been allocated to help seniors with hot meals. At that such time, we'll merge those two into one under Diane and her department, and then Brandy will go back, I'm sorry, uh, Mary Beth will go back to the previous pay that she was at before. So, she'll assume the duties of both just until the money runs out. So, rather than hire someone else for a short term when we know we'd have to make some changes, we're gonna streamline the government a little bit and, uh, absorb that under the Senior Levy Department for future services and see what happens at that time with the, the hot meals. Explain that about right?
Yes, Alex, Steven O'Zee Bush, in the Resources Department. Uh, I would like to stress that, well, we thank Brandy first and foremost for her service to the town and her seniors. Um, the work that she has done is commendable and on a very tight budget, and, uh, we wish her the best in her future endeavors with. Uh, with that being said, um, we saw an opportunity to, what you just said. Well, Human Resources saw an opportunity and then got with Diane very quickly. Um, we have two offices, essentially, one was just running on minimal funding and was offering meals to seniors, um, a hundred and twenty seniors to be exact, as of when I talked to them last week. Uh, we saw an opportunity to, obviously, needing to please themselves in that area, move somebody underneath Diane, she needs help anyways for her staffing goes. Uh, Diane needed a full-time employee. Uh, Mary Beth was more than willing to step up in the interim, she's already been training for the last week. Um, we actually looted Brandy on July sixth, so we have one more week to get Mary Beth, uh, up to heart, and she was doing a seminal job so far, I've checked in with her twice. Um, I've spoken with her, she's more than, more than willing to take on the task. So, a hundred and twenty meals will eventually go and be dispersed between, uh, J J C, Jewish community, uh, our country, huh, country neighbor, and, uh, mobile meals. So, we've kinda covered all our bases on this so far, just need to make sure that we execute everything here as well as we let seniors don't. Um, then also, I wanna make note that Brandy and Mary Beth both have been talking with the staff that they have at the Office of Elderly Affairs, they're part timers, they do a huge service due, they obviously deliver meals and check on elderly. Um, but they have been very aware for over the past couple of years that this funding was minimal and that they could, you know, obviously be out of a part-time job at any time. Not losing any full-time employees, we're losing part-time employees and volunteers. So, yeah, we're definitely going to be, get rid of a full department.
And I would just ask, from the board's point of view, you know, to make sure that we follow up to see that those meals still are covered by those other agencies. If we find there's a hole in there somewhere, people are getting without service, it's somewhat of our fault that you notify the board so we can take other actions possibly then to make that happen. And for those part-time employees that are gonna be phased out, if there's ways that they still want employment with the county, we can integrate them possibly into some other departments if they still, you know, we don't wanna just put them on the streets 'cause we're gonna combine an, an agency. They're dedicated workers, they, these are some of the people that did a thankless job going door-to-door to deliver these meals, we wanna make sure they're not, um, that their service is appreciated and they're rewarded and that they still stay part of the family if they wanna be.
Yeah, we'll keep a close eye on them when time gets closer. We have enough time, at least in November, potentially December, so we'll keep a close eye.
Diane?
Uh, Diane from Senior Levy Administration. The plan is to transition these people to the other vendors that we have, but if there is the inability due to funding that the other vendors can't handle that workload, then Senior Levy will just continue to absorb the cost, our Senior Levy funding, to make sure those meals continue to be delivered and not needed anymore. Trying to merge between the other vendors and we will keep those meals.
I guess that was my question, when, when and if the funding runs out and that we'd have to disperse some meals to these other vendors, uh, what happens to like Mary Beth Pumpfree, she's gonna be absorbed by one of the vendors, or?
No, she'll be under, in my, under my office.
Okay. Okay, good.
Yeah, we're in my office, man, transportation.
Okay.
She'll go back to what she's doing now, but underneath Diane at the same rate that she was before.
Gotcha.
So, she'll go full-time interim for a while and then back to full-time with the, the still thing. Okay, well, just make sure, like I said, we, we understand, we don't want any seniors to freak out that they're gonna lose their meals, they're gonna lose their service, they're gonna lose the nice guy who comes to the door to check on them. You know, we wanna make this transition seamless, and I appreciate Diane stepping forward to absorb a little more work through this, this process. And we wish, again, we don't fault anybody, uh, for leaving, going to a better opportunity for themselves, so we miss, wish Ms. Greenwood good luck. We're sorry to lose her, but at least we're keeping her within Trumbull County with Sheriff's Department. And this was an agency that was, we were a little scared, uh, one of the first meetings I had here in February, I think it was, they were worried about not having enough money to make it past July. They were able to get acquired funding, it's gonna bring them past October now, from what I understand, possibly even into November. So, this seems like a nice transition and a nice use of streamlining government, streamlining, um, the labor that we have and, and still providing good service to the people they support. Okay, number forty, been waiting for this one for a long time also. To approve the personnel action for full-time employment of Ms. Tacey Bond as the nine-one-one Director, effective Monday, July thirty-first, pursuant to the authorized job posting in March twenty-one and April fifth. Mrs. Bond will be paid at a rate of forty-four seventy-five an hour, range fourteen twenty years, and upon completion of a hundred and twenty day probationary period, will then be paid forty-six eighty-three per hour, range fourteen twenty-five years. This action recommendation of Human Resources Department, and she has successfully passed a pre-employment drug screen and background check. And I can tell you from the interview process, she's experienced, she comes from a department in, uh, north-central Ohio where she has twenty-six years' experience, um, working in two different agencies. Um, her recommendations come that they don't wanna lose her, they're sad to lose her, everyone from the sheriff to the mayor. So, it seems like we're getting a good one that, um, is much needed now, because we got a lot of work to do in nine-one-one. And, um, with her leadership, you know, we're gonna, we're, she's gonna be thrown right in the frying pan right out of the gate, and, uh, and I fully believe that, that she's the, the perfect candidate for this job moving forward, and I can't wait to get her on board. Now, forty-one. To approve the personnel action for the change in job classification pay for Mrs. Patty Goldner to the nine-one-one Assistant Director of Operations Coordinator, effective Monday, July thirty-first. Mrs. Goldner will replace the rate of thirty-eight eighty-four per hour, range twelve twenty years. This action for recommendation, Human Resources Department. Can't say enough about Mrs. Goldner. For almost three years, she served as an interim capacity in a position she was told was gonna be six months, and she's done her job and the director's job, and of late, uh, technician, uh, operations job, serving the job with three people. And, um, done a great job with that, she sells things together. Um, we have some issues in nine-one-one with staffing and pay, and, and there is a master plan with all of this to move forward, and I think Tacey and Patty working together is gonna be a great team. And I think the new classification, the way that Human Resources is, is, uh, working things, we're gonna have, once again, people that wanna come work at nine-one-one, they're gonna be rewarded, um, with pay and with supervisory positions that's, that's coming down the pipe, that, uh, we're, we're gonna take care of that department in the best way that we can, and this is probably the best thing I've done since I've been here, and, uh, and I'm looking forward to her first day work. Okay, forty-two. To adopt the resolution for record purposes of the Trumbull Board of County Commissioners, regular weekly meeting scheduled for Wednesday, July twelfth, at ten-thirty A M, shall be held at the Trumbull County Fairgrounds, eight ninety-nine Everett Hall Road, Cortland, Ohio. Uh, it's a hundred and seventy-seventh annual county fair. We invite the public to attend the opening ceremony, which will be held at ten A M on the historic stage at the east e- end of the Dairy Parlor. The fair board invites everyone to come out and enjoy the activities. The fair will run from July eleventh, there's Sunday, July seventeenth. And again, it's a public meeting there, um, don't know about the capabilities we're gonna have electronically or visually to tape the meeting, we probably won't, so this is a chance for the public to come and see us, meet us here where we have the same person and, uh, interact with, uh, you know, I would, I would encourage also this time, too, all department heads, I mean, we got more than twenty people at this meeting here today just for a workshop, and I would encourage all department heads to attend this meeting also if you can. Um, one, to show support of the fair and support of the fair board and the public that puts so much work into the fair. Um, but it's a nice opportunity then for the public to come and actually meet someone from veteran services, to meet, uh, the guy who they, they, um, committed their A R P grants to, and meet the water guy and, um, it, I would encourage department heads, if you can free your schedule, to please be there for that meeting if you can, yes. Andre Yoder?
Andre Yoder, just to clarify, um, although we won't be able to zoom it, we will record it. Um, we'll have a recording.
Sure.
And as soon as we can get that posted on the website, it will be done. So, it's all a matter of getting it back here and getting it to I T to be able to do that, so it will still be recorded.
And I believe Tuesday is a free day at the fair for the public? Or minimum price for the meeting like that?
The opening day or whatever?
Yeah.
The opening day is Tuesday. I'm not sure about the price for the public, I know those of us that got invited for the opening, it is. But the general public, my question, um, that week, will there be a workshop?
Yes, there'll be a workshop the day before, we'll still go over.
Yeah, so, because the opening ceremony is at the same time as we generally have the workshop.
I see what you're saying.
So, I don't know if you wanna schedule that on, maybe on the Monday here, or if you wanna, how you wanna do that, but.
I'm sure, what do you think?
I'm fine with Monday, um, so that would, or, I'm sorry, so Tuesday is the meeting or Wednesday?
Wednesday is the meeting. Tuesday is that. Tuesday is that opening. Where, it's in a, it's at their ten, it's at ten o'clock. They have that at the pavilion there where they introduce all the public officials and declare the fair open.
You know, the week before, our meeting is moved back because the Fourth of July holiday is on a Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
So, we need to talk about that too also as far as.
Our meeting is, our Fourth of July is Tuesday, so the workshop would be Wednesday, the meeting would be Thursday.
Right.
If you want to change that, I would have to notice the meeting.
I think that's fine.
Is that fine?
Yeah.
That's how it's written in our reorders. That's how we do it.
Yeah, we, once there's a holiday, you skip the day and then you start the next.
Yeah, so the workshop would be Wednesday, the regular meeting would be Thursday, but if whoever.
And then this is like Tuesday. Do we need another workshop on Tuesday again before this next meeting?
We could have the workshop on Monday. Okay. Done with that or we can skip it. Doesn't matter to me.
Martha Yoder, auditor. I, I think you might want to just kind of assess how big your agenda is between those, because those meetings are closed together.
Right.
And, and if you don't have a long agenda, you may be able to dispense with having a workshop. You might want to schedule one and then cancel it if you need to.
Good idea. Let's do it. Let's schedule for Monday and then we'll be at the grand opening Tuesday and then we'll have our meeting Wednesday at the fairgrounds. And we'll advertise that correctly for the public. But again, we encourage the public to attend, um, the opening ceremony and if they want to come and attend the, the meeting, I would, again, I would invite all department heads to, if you can get away from work, come to be there in support of the whole process and the public and engaging with the public on that day and, and the people that listen in every week or whenever, get a chance to actually see who that water guy is and who the new HR director is and so on and so forth. I think it'd be a good opportunity to do that. Okay. Forty-three. Authorize the payment of fifteen hundred dollars for the Workforce Development Board of Trumbull County's annual membership dues. Mahoning Valley Manufacturers Coalition. Membership in the MVMC allows the Workforce Development Board as well as the Ohio means Job Center access to a broad coalition of manufacturers across the Mahoning and Shenango Valleys.
Yes, Dimitri Logas, Workforce Development Board. Um, it also allows us, uh, Trumbull County to participate in multiple apprenticeship grants that the, that the coalition has received and also contribute to the emerging markets and advanced manufacturing initiatives, which they have. We've been a, a, a member since it, since its inception, so we, you know, we've been a real good partner with them and it's a wonderful opportunity for us to be together. Okay. Um, before we go to the next one, uh, we thought we had two more, uh, agenda items, but they've been taken off. Uh, I like that, bring them because they're very time sensitive and we need to make the movement on them.
I thought they were.
No, those were Mr. Gargano's through Tana funds. These are completely different. Uh, these are, we, we went out for bid for two, uh, Employer of Records like, uh, Mr. Gargano did. Uh, one is for our, uh, our WIOA CCMEP, Commissioner, or Mr. Gargano's was the, uh, Tana CCMEP, which is a different pot of money. We went out, uh, received bids back from that and, uh, we received three bids for the CCMEP grant and Nesco Resource, uh, was the winner of that bid. Uh, as you could see, the three bids that we received, Nesco Resources, Minuteman EOR and Tessian. Um, we, we picked Nesco because it's a flat rate of twenty dollars per paycheck. As you can see, the Minuteman EOR, they wanted a fifteen percent wage markup and also a three percent service fee. So, if you set a thousand dollars, it was almost a two hundred dollar fee per paycheck. So, uh, the, the best bid that we received and of course Tessian, they, they were more of a, uh, software access service and they didn't, they weren't able to identify themselves as the Employer of Record. Employer of Record simply means we're putting all the liability on them, workers' compensation, unemployment compensation, thanks to that effect. So, we, we alleviate the, the Trumbull County Commissioners from any liability. And all of our grants that we do, we incorporate the costs when we ask for those grants. And this one is under our WIOA funding, the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act funding. And then the one behind it is, uh, a special grant that we received for the Business Resource Network, uh, funds. We received two proposals on those, uh, and we, of course, uh, they were the same as, uh, same proposals as, uh, the CCMEP, only this one was even a little bit more competitive. Nesco Resources bid eighteen dollars per check instead of twenty on this one and Minuteman still stayed the same at fifteen point four five percent wage markup and a three percent service. And unfortunately, these are very time sensitive for us, uh, because everything starts here next week and of course we had a little delay of two weeks. We were looking to do it in two weeks.
Do you need these on the agenda for tomorrow?
Yes, please.
Can I please have the language then?
Yeah, I, I sent it to you with the, with the, with the one that you sent. So, and we were, we got something in response for, we thought we were forty-five and forty-six, but we, but it just got.
But when we discussed, I thought there was a Mr. Gargano's, Mr. Gargano's, I'd be happy to put them on.
Right, thank you. I will, I will send it to you. That's no problem at all.
Thank you.
And, yeah, and I appreciate that. It's very important to us to do this.
Okay, so that'll be, um, two more added.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, forty-five. Uh, we had the public discussion with, uh, Tom Campbell about the, uh, vehicle. Forty-six. To rescind the personnel action for the employment of Mr. Ronald Exline for the position of labor package plant with Trumbull County Sanitary, Sanitary Engineers Department pursuant to job posting. It's rescinded because the employee did not successfully complete his probationary period.
Uh, Commissioner Bob Meyer, I'm a sanitary engineer. Um, in our union contract, we have a hundred and twenty days to a employee who's been employed for about sixty days. We're just really. And also, we did skip over number forty-four.
We did.
Yes.
Uh, to accept the resignation of Mr. Ethan Satina, who was position of plant operator, uh, MCWWTP with Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department. And we wish him much success and happiness in his new role. So, he's leaving the department?
He is. Uh, he works for our Mestido Creek wastewater treatment plant. Um, he works the rotating shift where they work all the turns and he's basically.
So, that concludes everything then on the agenda. That's a big agenda. Um, we're going to go to Herm. And Herm Brewer, you, you want to talk about the restrooms of the Veteran Service Commission? Herm Brewer, Trumbull County Veteran Service Commission, Commissioners.
The, um, in twenty fourteen, the Commissioners approved, um, the design for our building. And as we progressed with the building, um, and cost became a, a little bit of an issue, we had eliminated restrooms on the office side of the building. Uh, so there is a public side of the building. There are restrooms on the public side of the building. Uh, so we had always wanted to have those, uh, restrooms installed. Uh, during that time when we were, uh, working with the engineer, uh, which was Philip Secanic, um, working with, uh, Mr. Masaki and Commissioner Helsel, um, we also utilized, um, the plans from the Summit County Veteran Service Commission building and incorporated some of their, um, some of their processes. And now that we've been in the building, uh, for the past seven years, we have identified that some of those areas we can maybe eliminate and it would make for a more efficient workflow in the office. So, essentially what we're looking at is the installation of the bathrooms, which were removed. Uh, the, the walls are existing, the plumbing is existing. Uh, it was just that we never finished those bathrooms. Uh, and then also moving walls in the administrative suite, uh, that would make for a, a better flow of, of work, uh, within the building. So, I started this process, briefed the Commissioners back at the budget hearing, uh, in the fall and, uh, went and contacted, uh, Bill Hart from Maintenance to determine if this was a, a project that they would have the capacity to complete. Uh, he responded that they would not. Um, so at that point, I, uh, reached out to Philip Secanic, who was the original architect with the plans. They created the plans for the work that we needed to be, uh, have complete. I contacted three, uh, Trumbull County approved contractors to provide us with bids. Unfortunately, uh, not all three of those bids came under the fifty thousand dollar threshold, uh, to require competitive bidding. So, I reached out to the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office because one of those bids did fall under the fifty thousand dollar threshold and I wanted to make sure that, um, that we were following, uh, the appropriate measures. The Trumbull County Prosecutor's opinion was just returned last week from, uh, from, uh, Bill Danco and it said essentially that yes, we should follow that competitive bid process. So, that's why I'm here today.
Yeah, even though the one bid came in lower than fifty thousand, I think it's pretty commonplace and just to be on the safe side that if you do bid it now, it's supposed to just, uh, closes.
Yeah, so I'm not sure what our, what my next step would be if, if I'm required to assist in that process or.
Yeah, this is Jim Masaki from the Auditors. Uh, yeah, I think when I responded on an email to you, I think we should get a proposal from, um, Philip Secanic for their services. So, that'd be the first step that the Commissioners could accept that and approve it. I'm sure it's won't be, since they did the original plans for the building, they're quite familiar with the project.
Right.
Um, anything under twenty-five thousand is no problem, you know, for a, for a non-competitive process. And plus they are on the approved list anyway.
Right.
If you get a professional service for the architects, they're under twenty-five thousand. So, that, that, that would be my recommendation, would, would be a proposal from them. Commissioners can put that on the agenda. You can move forward. They can do the plans and specifications.
Then we go out to bid.
Yes. Is that followed?
Of course.
Thank you. Whatever I can do.
So, I, I need to reach back out to Bruce and get a proposal from him then?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And you don't have to get other, other architects or involved because number one, you've already started with them and number two, they're on our approved list.
Yeah.
It's under twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, the law has changed in the last twenty-four, maybe twenty months, that any, anyone can bid now that's under twenty-five thousand, even if you're not on the approved list for architects. They are on the approved list and they, they did the original plan, so they're, they're a logical choice.
Yeah.
Been a very good.
And the, the original plan did include the bathrooms, right?
They did include the bathrooms. They, actually, they even showed the, the sewer and water lines in the wall, so, I mean, everything's there.
So, this should be minimal cost, I would imagine, just, uh.
That's, that's why I proceeded thinking that it would, it would come in, in well under the fifty thousand dollar mark and fortunately that didn't happen.
Okay, yep, go ahead and move forward with that.
All right.
If I would just concur.
All right.
Okay, anybody else from the, uh, departments?
Uh, Commissioners, um, there's a.
Gary Newbrow.
Yeah, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. Uh, first of all, my daughter had a baby last week and so next week.
Congratulations.
Everything came out healthy, beautiful little baby.
Wonderful.
All right. But she lives in North Carolina. Next week I'm going to be on vacation, Fourth of July week, go down there, visit, see the new baby, that sort of thing. There's a development in Heat and Shoots that I just became aware of here in the last couple of days. There may be a change order on next week's agenda and Bill Macoski will bring it over to you, but I wanted to give you a heads up before it starts. Um, if you know the Heat and Shoots project, we have a lot of vacant property down there. One of the property owners came forward and said, oh geez, can I get some, uh, service connections to my vacant properties? I told him, well, I explained it to public hearing, if you want a service connection to vacant property, you're going to be subject to that capital charge for the next thirty years. Uh, the capital charge at the public hearing was just shy of thirty-five bucks a month. Right now, we came in well, well below cost. Some estimate that's going to be somewhere around twenty-eight, twenty-nine bucks a month. And so, I explained it to him that if you get a service connection for a vacant lot, you got to pay that, you'll get a capital charge only bill until somebody builds something and buys it off you, then that capital charge will transfer to them. So, he didn't realize this thing about, you know, it transfers to, you know, somebody, whoever becomes the sewer customer. So, anyway, uh, he wants twenty-six service connections down. So, of the vacant properties. So, that means that our total debt on the project, instead of dividing it by seventy-seven, we're now going to be dividing it up by a hundred and three. Now, I, now that thirty, if it's, our capital charge is thirty bucks a month for thirty years, that's like ten thousand eight hundred they eventually pay us over to thirty years. Uh, but it doesn't cost me ten thousand eight hundred to put in a service connection. It's less than half that. So, we are waiting on a price from the, uh, contractor so I can come up with an exact how much this is going to reduce the capital charge for everybody down there. But if there is a cap, a, a change order on next week's agenda regarding, you know, you may say this is a big number, but this is a great thing for everybody down there is going to reduce all their costs.
Absolutely.
And, yes.
Um, I spoke with the owner as well and explained to him the major subdivision process and asked him to reach out to you. So, the only, the only point that I brought up to him was, you know, when he gets to the point where he surveys and presents a final plat, it will have to meet all of the regulations.
Right.
Including Wattersfield Township frontage requirements. So, I recommend that he have an engineer on site to sort of decide where the connections should be.
Well, he, he already met with Bill Macoski the last couple of days out in the field. They got him marked. He's aware of the subdivision regulations and has concluded that he wants twenty-six connections.
Okay. I just wanted to make him aware that in the future, when he gets the final plat, he would have to work with you, your office. And depending on the location of those individual lots, he may have to change them in.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
But from my standpoint, right now, he wants twenty-six, he's getting twenty, he's getting twenty-six capital charges.
Right, right.
Yeah, he can work out the rest of that later, but it's a good thing, it's a good thing for everybody down there.
Yeah.
Uh, I estimate that we may get that capital charge from, uh, what we presented at public hearing, about thirty-five a month down to about twenty bucks a month, which is significant. So, hopefully this will all work out, but if that's on the agenda next week while I'm not here, that is the background behind why we want to do this.
You worry this. What's that? Something bad, it's something positive.
Yeah, it is. Well, it looks bad. Oh, change order for how much money? But I mean, it is a, it's a, a great thing for everybody in that neighborhood, so.
And I was truly agreeing, having dialogue with Gary and then Morrow piping in and, again, water and sewer connection is now for even less money.
Yes, yes.
Moving forward, I appreciate that. Bill Hart, Maintenance.
Bill Hart, Trumbull County Maintenance. Um, I have a few things. I'm going to start off with a good note. We're going to start the handrail installation at the fairgrounds on the, uh, grandstand Thursday, Friday. Um, I got word from the insurance adjuster for the highway engineers group, they're only going to cover twenty-five thousand, which is deplorable. It can't be. Is it the age of the roof? The age of the roof is fifty-seven, nineteen fifty-seven. And since the weather blew off, whatever was up there destroyed the rest of the decking. Um, so replacement is needed. Estimated cost is about one point four million dollars. Up in, on Yoder, we're speaking about weeks ago on how we may address this if it's approved. Um, and then my second biggest project is the stone building, of course, the HVAC holes and upgrades. The roof is leaking, uh, by the adult probation. Of course, got stains on the new carpet. So, that's another big ticket item that I myself and Auditor Yoder were discussing weeks ago to see. We're sure, and how we do it.
We're going to need to do both of those and if we borrow the money on the.
We're going to have to, yeah. Unfortunately, the timing isn't great because we just, at this point, we're doing the rollover from sanitary engineers and we're including the elevator in that and so that kind of decreases the fees a little bit for us, but we got to do what we got to do. What we'll end up doing probably is then we'll do a note whenever we're ready to do What we'll end up doing probably is then, we'll do a note whenever we're ready to do that, just like we've done with the elevator and um at uh we will probably do the note, instead of doing it for a full year, we'll do it so that it corresponds to next year when we have to roll things over, it'll all be the same time and we're not doing a whole bunch of things right at once. We've had to do that, I guess, with in the past with a sanitary engineer, we kinda had to kinda take everything, I don't wanna say consolidate, cause that sounds a little different, but uh put them all in one, one basket.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the estimate on the stone building's roof?
On or the HVAC? They got troubles, heating valves, the whole upgrade AC on, the unit on the roof is in. That's estimated one point four?
And we are at a point right now as a county where we don't have a ton of debt, which is great. Um, it's not great to take on more, I just, as I've said before, the auditor Yoder, by the way, um, just please don't buy any more old buildings. Um, but what we need really is for us to get a more solid figure.
Yes.
Uh, because then we need to then decide how much we're gonna take the note out for. And we need that for, you know, bond counsel and for the financial advisor.
And for that to happen, we would have to advertise for a, our Q to get engineers involved on the roof for the highway and for the stone building and that's how we would secure at least the an accurate number.
We need to move forward.
Okay, Tracy Hines, Oprobution?
Thank you, I wanna give a plug for the stone building, cause that's where the probation department is located.
I know.
So when I started, we were only on the first floor, the sheriff's department was on the second floor and workforce development and transit. I've gotten there, we have taken over, we still have all of one, we have taken over all of two except for the sheriff's office and all of four except for workforce development. I wanna give a shout out to the maintenance department, the work on the fourth floor is absolutely beautiful, they put in so much care and time and it looks fantastic. If you knew what it was before and what it was now, because they had to put walls back, that child support enforcement had taken out, it looks absolutely beautiful. New carpeting, I can't say enough about the work that your department has done, it's extraordinary. But literally the next day after the carpet was put in, we had a massive water leak that put a gigantic stain, because the roof is tar, so when the water comes through, it's a black stain on the carpet literally the next day. We have a giant leak right now in the lobby, when like when you walk in, you're like, oh, this is beautiful, there's a trash can collecting water that we just got from yesterday in Quebec.
Three different places.
And there's leaks all over the place.
Hey, like the planning commission building?
And and what I wanna kind of plug for it is, because we've taken over the floors, we have thirteen hundred selling offenders on probation. Uh, we're starting programming on the second floor to provide like employment and education and things for the offenders, the volume in that building is going to be significantly.
How many people do you have in the building?
There will be, there's twenty-two probation plus, you know, and transit. But you know, the elevator, the amount of offenders, defendants coming into the building is going. I realize there's lots of need in the county, I'm aware, but the building is going from hardly being used to being used significantly, so remember us.
No, that's a good point, and ideally, when we talked about the fourth floor, you know, we wanted to kinda have, it was kinda thrown at us, so we had, we knew we had to put that together, we knew we had to revamp it for you guys, but we also knew there were issues on the, on the, on the roof of the HVAC, so ideally, in a, in a perfect world, we would've done things differently and done one first than the other, but we need you guys, needed that fourth floor space, so now we're left to do that, so that's our next step.
And we do appreciate that you've allowed us to have the space on the fourth floor, and it's obviously a commissioner's, um, we appreciate it, we can advantage, we will use every inch you give us. Um, I thought, remember that.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you, Bill, for what you did too.
Steve Gerber.
Steve Gerber from Highway Engineer, I apologize for being late, um, we had a new employee start today. Orientation, taking them to the job sites when I come here. Do you have questions on our agenda items?
We do not, we get, it's, it's looked standard enough on there, things you've described many times to us, so I think we were able to get through it pretty good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Auditor Yoder.
I, first of all, Auditor Yoder, I love the stone building. And and both Bill and I love, love history and we probably left our own devices, we'd just talk about that all day, but but it's just, it's. Um, I'd I'd rather, uh, to be honest, in some of our historical buildings within the county, I'd rather see some private sector people come in and make them nice, like Robin Theater has done, it's beautiful there, but the other thing I just wanted to note, because I forgot to say it when we were going over the additional appropriations, um, the additional appropriation for the auditor's office, I know that sometimes there's been confusion as to whether the explanation has been given. Um, I have, the explanation was sent to the other commissioner, so I have the email, so I'm not going to be here tomorrow, so if that comes up, I wanted you guys to be aware that it has been explained to her via email.
Okay, perfect. And if you do that, Martha, feel free to copy us on that too, so we have a train.
Sure, it actually, it's, um.
Or we can see the emails on there and pull it up.
Ms. Paula has it as well, and I, it, I think it goes to the agenda item email as well, and I don't know how that access works for you guys, but um I will remind Christie to um add you guys.
Okay, that would be great, yeah, cause then we will go on.
Yep.
Okay, uh, anyone else on the floor here?
Uh, Julie Green, I just wanted to um let Martha Yoder know that your person Christie's sister, really spent time with Missy and I uh last week and just to say we really appreciate her, she does a great job for the county.
Thank you, um, she's a great asset and I appreciate her, um, she's going to move into our chief accountant position at the end of the year, probably. So and so, um, the current chief accountant has done a really good job of training her.
Mr. Masaki, uh, first, who do you?
Yeah, we have uh fif- fifteen requests of uh legal counsel for uh our opinions and uh three more I'm getting ready to send down.
Okay, so we're waiting on those fifteen steps, okay, cause I know Braceville's inquired.
Yeah, that's part of the request.
Zeta's inquired, if not, if, I can't remember the last meeting, if we moved Zeta's forward illegal or not?
No, we didn't.
If we did not, can I, can I get concurrence, move Zeta's Township's project forward?
I thought we did that.
I I thought we did too, but if Zeta informed me, they didn't hear it when.
I didn't hear it.
When they listened, so if we did not move Zeta's, please do that, it's for some road improvements, I believe.
Yes, that's correct.
So um when we hear from the other ones back, then we'll be able to add them to the agenda.
I can add another of the next three, yeah.
Good, as we uh, today, today was Water and Sewer Day, next time will hopefully be Township Day, I'll probably get some more money moving back. TK, Rick from Bright.
Speaking of that, real quick, I'm sorry, Rick, I let you go, but um, got a message today from Greg Leonard, Kinsman Township trustee. Uh, I know that their one project didn't qualify for the building, but they submitted another project through the portal. Uh, wanted to know if you received it, I didn't know if you saw it yet, I haven't seen it, I haven't seen it.
Who was, who was the name, I didn't hear the first one?
Greg Leonard from Kinsman Township, he's trustee, I don't know if it's.
His, his, his name doesn't ring a bell, but yeah, we had, um, I think somebody sent something.
I know their previous project didn't qualify, but he's submitting another project, um, so just heads up, he wanted me to let you know that he submitted it through the portal.
I, I.
Right.
I'll check. There was a small one, let's see.
I just received it this morning, so that's one.
I know Braceville's waiting, um.
Yeah, it's pending.
Yep, so the ones that are out there, just wanna make sure we stay on top of them.
Yeah, the other one was Gus Davis.
Yeah, please look at any Kinsman one then, if they have one, that's great. Okay, Rick from Bright.
Uh, Rick Stocker from Bright Energy and Evaders, I was actually just here to add on status of our ARQ request.
That was one of the ones, you had an assistant here, we did move that one forward, it's one of those fifteen that we're waiting on.
Yeah, two of them, three, one of them. One of the three, sorry, I missed you.
Thank you, Rick. Um, a couple of things, and I had two, uh, tomorrow, I'm anticipating an update from the DC trip, I asked about it, the last one from Commissioner Frenchko, she said she'd have it at the next meeting, um, she did talk about some briefly, some, just a couple of things, but I'm I'm hoping that we can get that. Something in writing of an update of what what happened, I heard, it sounds like a lot of meetings occurred, I know they had something with the uh uh energy sector with the oil producers or whatever, and uh there were a couple of other meetings, I heard some seminars, I heard were pretty interesting. From talking to people at the Chamber and the Fort, but they weren't sure of, you know, what meetings actually that we were involved in or whatever through commissioners, so I'm gonna ask Commissioner Frenchko again to follow up with a report she said she'd have for the next meeting. And then, um, a couple of things that happened over the last two weeks, I just wanna clarify, uh, first off, we did unify the water districts. And in no way, shape or form, does that say we are raising water rates for anybody, that was just unifying the water districts. Gary did approach me, said, hey, we're worried about the budget, worried about water fees down the road. We had a conversation of what can we do to save money, let's save every bit of money we can first, before we even discuss a public hearing. Um, so Gary canceled the public hearing that that he was intending to have a couple of weeks ago and then came back with this new plan, condensing the districts first and and looking at cost savings that we could do. So there's been a kind of a scare out there amongst the trustees, I forgot, I can't tell you how many phone calls over the last two weeks that, you know, you can't raise the rates on us, why are you raising the rates, why are you picking on Howland, why are you coming after our water rate? That was never even a conversation that anybody had with me, ever, and no township was singled out, no township was pointed out. The facts of what people pay are public and there were some papers stating what the districts paid and Gary said they're gonna be paying the same amount through this transition, if there's ever any change, the public will be the first to know about it, there'll be hearings on the stuff. There is no backdoor plan for myself, uh, speaking for Gary, if I could, there's no backdoor plan to slide anything without anybody's approval or to sneak something in the back door. Um, I had a couple of, even an elected official call Howland Township trustees and tell them, hey, they're coming after your water rates, they're coming to raise your rates, that's bullshit. Did not happen, conversation never happened with me, never happened with Gary, I don't appreciate it and I don't want the public in any way, shape or form, especially the trustees out there, to think that the county is in any way working to get in their pockets and any more than than we have to to provide service. So I just wanted to spell that rumor publicly, that that is not something that's gonna happen, at the end of the year, as with all departments, we're gonna do reviews, we're gonna look at rates, we're not gonna operate in in the red here in Trumbull County, we're not gonna go broke. No decisions will ever be made without Auditor Yoder and uh the department head's input, and if we need to raise rates on anything or pay more or anything like that, it's all gonna be done in public and it'll be discussed at this table on a Tuesday and voted on on a Wednesday there. So I would say get involved in the process here again, follow the votes on Wednesday and that's what's gonna happen, that's the only public thing that's gonna happen. The only real thing that's gonna happen, the rest of it is fifteen-year-old grade school or high school drama that doesn't need to occur anywhere in the county. Um, with that, same thing, we had a meeting in here last week that I called, cause the Health Department really wants new location for their sixty-seven employees and uh we brought everybody to the table that has an interest in the building in Cortland, we have the city of Cortland, Mr. Masaki helped out with us on that. Um, I asked the Port Authority to get involved, because they do that for a living, they refurbish old buildings and that's their job, that's what they do. So we had Anthony Trevina from the the Port Authority, everybody offered great ideas and eventually I saw that the county, we backed out of it and there is no cost to us with this move, if they do intend to get a building. Um, the Health Department has their own money and there are different ways um to do that, working with the city of Cortland where we can get a new home for the Health Department with current digs that are accessible for everybody and at the same time, the city of Cortland may have something in for them for new admin building and a place for the police department at zero cost to the taxpayers or the county's budget, or Martha Yoder have a note from the purse up and hand me any cash um for something like this. Again, that was twisted, phone calls were made to board members and to the public that we can't leave, the Warren's gonna lose taxpayers' dollars and even trying to get Mayor Franklin and the city uh upset with us that we're gonna take employees out of Warren. I don't work for the city of Warren, I work for the county and the county taxpayers, everyone in this room works for the county. Do we wanna see anyone lose money? No, but there's opportunity, maybe through the same process we had in that meeting, we potentially may have found a new place for nine-one-one, which would move employers into the city of Warren. So that's not a factor, that's all, again, the sky's falling, it's drama, shouldn't occur and um, you know, this is something that's good for everybody. You know, I was even told that someone called me and said, with a commissioner saying that we can't lose that building on Chestnut Street, that that's a, it's gonna be vacant, we can't have vacant buildings, we can't use it, I talked to Bill Hart about it, that building will be utilized for stuff. If if the Health Department leaves, we'll still utilize that building for stuff and take care, we have a need for a building right now besides that, so. Uh, Bill, hats off too, you went and you looked at the potential place for nine-one-one.
Yes.
And Patty Goldner's looked at it, it looks great, um, you know, so the drama's gotta stop that goes on with this stuff and when we make decisions at the meeting, we discuss amongst twenty-two people and then one wants to try to dispel everything we talked about, it's gotta stop. And I I just uh implore again the commissioners or the uh Township trustees, the people that we're making conversations with, to to follow the facts and listen to the facts and listen to the meetings and to see exactly what's going on, this is all for the good of Trumbull County, moving us forward. Done some historic stuff in the last couple of months, you know, as of tomorrow, we're gonna have a new nine-one-one director. We're gonna, a unified water district that's been going, problems with that since the nineteen seventies. You know, as old as I am, most of the people in this room, these water districts have been popping up and politics and wars with that, uh, have been played with that and we're gonna get rid of all that in in hopes of clarifying and shining light on the whole thing so that nobody has an advantage over that and everything is fair and impartial. So the things that are happening are great, but again, it's historic day today. Uh, Gary just came up with a plan using government funds, what we're supposed to do, to provide water and sewer for a ton of people here just today that I hope to vote on tomorrow and pass, um, the glass is half-full and the glass is not half-empty. We had that discussion last week about, I, when one trustee said that what a horrible week it was for Trumbull County, we're in the dire straits. Not from the agenda that I'm voting on, I'm looking at, and when I compare it to the past ten years even of agendas, we're kicking some ass here in this room with the help of everybody in this depart- of, in our department, everyone in the county working together in one direction. And and I know, I've been to Blossom for concerts before, I don't know, how many of you have ever been to Blossom for concerts, anybody? When you go to leave and when you come in, there's just a big mob of people moving to the exits and you can't stop, you're gonna get run over if there's someone coming the opposite direction, good luck, because there's the, the masses are gonna push them right out the door. That's what it feels like in this room, is when we get together, we're moving forward and we're, we're pushing forward ahead, there's nothing that can stop us and we're moving forward together for the right reasons.
One more thing, Martha Yoder, Auditor, as we talk about acquiring more property, um, just remember that if we wanna, that's gonna be debt too and we kinda wanna try to time it as best we can together, because then it's less on fees, if we can do things together, that's.
Correct. Anybody else?
Hello, Commissioners?
We'll get to you in just a second.
So permission to go forward with Auditor Yoder to go for our RQs for two buildings for roof end or heating controls and valves group?
Yeah, we have to, yeah.
We have to. I'm just making sure.
Okay, phone line, so you have somebody on the phone line?
Yes, uh, good morning Commissioners, this is Mariano Longo with Downbeat Musical Arts Center, calling from Las Vegas.
Hello.
Uh, good morning, uh, uh, no problems here this morning, just wanted to thank you for the hard work you're doing there. I I I have the advantage of listening at length to these meetings and uh you certainly are doing some heavy lifting over there. Thank you for all your efforts. Uh, the purpose of my call is, I have an ARP grant pending for Downbeat Musical Arts Center and I, my only question is, how uh will we be informed if the grant uh goes through? Uh, is that an email, is that a phone call, uh, and is there any kind of a timeline associated with this? Uh, I ask only because I have contractors uh on the line waiting to go to work and I I keep uh, you know, putting them off as as long as possible. So I I I'm, I was just hoping that there is some type of timeline to look at these nonprofit ARP grants.
Correct, Mr. Masaki, uh, this is one of the ones we, we said, talk to Warren, Warren gives half, we'll give half, Warren made the commitment for half.
Right.
Which Commissioner, uh, Canelo Lason and myself said, hey, he called us, he called her bluff and he wants half, we're gonna have two.
It's one of the pending fifteen.
Okay, Mr. Longo, you are one of the fifteen we're waiting to come back from the attorney? And as soon as he comes back from the attorney, how will he be notified?
I can, I can send him an email.
Okay, then Mr. Masaki will send you an email, once it comes back, then we'll have the wording from the attorney to put it up for a vote. Uh, these haven't taken too many weeks to do these things, so I would imagine if not, it it didn't make this week's agenda, possibly next week, maybe the week after at the latest, that we'll be able to get it to the agenda and put it to a vote. Uh, what you will hear publicly, you'll know first um by listening in, but then Mr. Masaki will follow up with you with an email.
Uh, thank you, gentlemen, I will be in town uh next week, I'll be at the building, working uh all summer long. So uh hopefully I I will be able to attend the meetings, but again, thank you for your ongoing work, uh, obviously getting a lot done and I enjoyed the the colorful commentary. You know, in the past few minutes, uh, sort of lively conversation, so that's great.
Well, if you, if you wanna call into the Commissioner's office next Monday or Tuesday, um, uh, our clerk will tell you if it's on the. Well, if you, if you wanna call into the commissioner's office next Monday or Tuesday, um, uh, our clerk will tell you if it's on the agenda or not for Wednesday.
Alright, thank you so much, and, uh, have a good day, alright?
Thank you, sir.
Alright, bye-bye.
Any other callers, you can hit star six and unmute yourself?
Paula, who, were they waiting for Tom Bella?
Um, she may have had a meeting...
Any other callers, star six and announce yourself? Motion to adjourn? Second?
Mr. Tian Tino Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes. Thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you.